We'll call our meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Mayor and Board Council of the Borough of Seaside Park County Votion, held on Thursday, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, scheduled to begin at the conclusion of the work session meeting, which has now just ended. Pursued to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting the notice of meeting for publication to the Asbury Park Press and the Ocean Star on January third, two thousand twenty-five. Notice of meeting of the governing body also has been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. Roll call?
Councilmember Anfield?
Here.
Councilmember Condos?
Here.
Councilmember Connor?
Here.
Councilmember Kraft?
Here.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Pearson?
Here.
Thank you.
Let us take a moment and all rise for a moment of silence to be followed by a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on the agenda is request for approval of amendments of May run two thousand twenty-five work session, also May run two thousand twenty-five a regular meeting. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Council President Wilk?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rotunda. Roll call.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Anfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
And next is a capital budget amendment. It's two thousand twenty-five, one eighty-six on the budget, amending our capital budget. And I know there's been a lot of work ongoing on this matter, and I don't know if Councilmember Kraft has certainly headed up the research, and we thank him very much and the committee for all the research that went into this.
The changes to the capital budget from what was in the adopted budget, two items were added. For the Marina, there was twenty thousand dollars for security cameras, and for the general fund, J Street roadway improvements, three hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars, of which there's a DOT grant of two hundred and forty-four thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars, which net costs the borough of eighty thousand seventy-five dollars.
Thank you, Bill. Any other questions, comments from council, or if not, a motion for the amendment to the capital budget?
I'll make the motion there.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Connor. Roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Anfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Next are ordinances. The first is first reading and introduction ordinance, two thousand twenty-five, eleven, appropriating three hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars for various general capital improvements and acquisitions. Any questions, comments?
Yeah, I could list the general capital improvements for that amount. There were about nine items or so. Eighty-seven thousand dollars for the reconstruction of Stockton Avenue, fourteen thousand dollars for alarm panel upgrades, forty thousand dollars for stormwater pipe and basin replacement, eighteen thousand dollars for pole and panel replacement, twenty-five thousand dollars for the retaining wall at O Street Playground, seventy-five thousand dollars towards the shoreline stabilization, twelve thousand five hundred for acquisition of inflatable movie screen and projector for recreation. That's for the movie theaters that we have during the summer at the Marina lawn mainly. Nineteen thousand dollars for utility task vehicle for beach control, patrol, seventeen thousand dollars for barricade trailers for the OEM, and fifty thousand dollars for a vehicle for the Department of Public Works. That's it. I got a ordinance there.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments from council, or if not, a motion for first reading?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Rotunda, and?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Anfield. Roll call.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Anfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Next is first reading and introduction ordinance, two thousand twenty-five, twelve, appropriating three hundred sixty-three thousand dollars for various water capital improvements and acquisitions.
Okay, I'd like to comment on that also, Mayor.
Roll call.
There's only four items for that. Hundred fifty thousand dollars set aside for rehabilitation of the wells, one hundred thousand dollars for various water sewer improvements, a hundred thousand dollars for sanitary cleaning inspections, and thirteen thousand dollars for acquisition of capital equipment, including but not limited to, security cameras. Again, that's out of the utility.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments from council, or if not, a motion for first reading?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Connor. Roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Anfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Next, first reading and introduction, it's ordinance, two thousand twenty-five, thirteen, appropriating three hundred sixty thousand dollars for various Marina capital improvements and acquisitions.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that, sir. This is for the Marina capital improvements, again, out of the Marina utility. Fifteen thousand dollars for bulkhead repairs, seventy-five thousand dollars for Marina water distribution, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for breakwater improvements, that's on the west side of the Marina, and twenty thousand dollars for security cameras.
Thank you, Bill. And thank you and your committee for all the work on all these capital issues and the amendments and ordinances related there, too. Any other comments from council, or if not, a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
Second.
Seconded by Council President Wilk. Roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Anfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Next is first reading and introduction ordinance, two thousand twenty-five, fourteen. It's amending Article One of Chapter Fifty of the Code of the Borough of Seaside Park entitled Tax Collector's Office, creating new section, fifty-two-point-one, entitled One Hundred Percent Disabled Veterans Tax Refunds. And the issue had arose as per introduction and correspondence from the tax collector's office and our CFO as well, as to what the practice was in other towns, which was a practice in our town as well, but this makes it uniform as to the date in particular when the documentation has been submitted along with a formal request from such an eligible veteran. Any other questions, comments, or if not, a motion for first reading?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Anfield?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Condos. Roll call.
Councilmember Anfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Next is first reading and introduction ordinance, two thousand twenty-five, fifteen, in ordinance of the Borough of Seaside Park and the County Votion, New Jersey, providing for various capital acquisitions and improvements and appropriating two million nine thousand one hundred and seven dollars therefore, and providing for the issuance of one million six hundred and eighty thousand seventy-one dollars in general improvement bonds or notes of the Borough of Seaside Park to financing. Any questions, comments from council, or if not, a motion for first reading?
I'd like to list the items on the?
Yes, I'm saying again, thank you, Bill, for all the work on this.
Yeah. And the first item is the acquisition of IT town communications equipment, including security cameras for beach control, an amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Acquisition of equipment for Seaside Park Fire Department, which includes the breathing apparatus cylinders as well as turnout gear, and that amount is thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and seven dollars. Improvements to public properties, including a firehouse and the police department building and Borough Hall, in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand dollars. Acquisition of a vehicle for a police department, including original apparatus and equipment, and that's for eighty thousand dollars. Acquisition, the next item is acquisition of a police department message board and the changing, tire-changing machine and hydraulic scissor lift for DPW. The total for those items are a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Next on the list is acquisition, construction, installation of a pole barn for DPW. This is a cost split with water sewer and the general fund, and the appropriation is for two hundred, three thousand five hundred dollars. There's another bayfront flooding mitigation project. The appropriation is one million twenty thousand dollars. Lastly, is reconstruction of J Street, and that appropriation is three hundred twenty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. Again, this last item has a DOT grant of appropriation of two hundred forty-four eight twenty-five, which the max bond note that we have to get is eight thousand seventy-five dollars. That's all.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments from council, or if not, a motion for first reading?
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Connor?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Rotunda. Roll call.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Councilmember Anfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Next is first reading and introduction ordinance, two thousand twenty-five, sixteen, in ordinance of the Borough of Seaside Park and the County Votion, State of New Jersey, providing for various water and sewer utility capital acquisitions and improvements and appropriating three hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred dollars therefore, and providing for the issuance of two hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars in water sewer utility bonds or notes of the Borough of Seaside Park to financing. Any questions, comments, or?
I just have a general question about these. When we put the amount, the appropriation doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to be the full cost, right? That's what we're estimating from our budget?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
With the capital.
Yes, yes, the capital. Okay. That was my only question. I should have asked it on the last one, but.
Anything else on this one, then, or if not, a motion?
I'll make the motion there.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Council President Wilk. Roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Anfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Next on the agenda are authorizations. I'll read in summary fashion. The first, the Sergeant John Lyons Five-K Run Walk, date Sunday, June eighth, two thousand twenty-five, eight-thirty a.m. to eleven-thirty a.m., Bayview Avenue. Any approval would be conditioned upon a permit from Ocean County. Second, this is yoga and J for various Saturdays, Sundays, and Mondays, May twenty-fourth to August thirty-first, in town, six-thirty a.m. to nine a.m., Saturdays and Sundays, six p.m. to seven-thirty p.m., Mondays, location M Street Beach. The next, Seaside Park PTA Blue Water Week events, Thursday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-nine, and Sunday, June one, two thousand twenty-five, five p.m. to six p.m. on the Thursday, twelve noon to one p.m. on the Sunday, location Third Avenue, Bayview Avenue, D Street. And that conditional, that would be approved only upon a condition of Ocean County approval as well. Questions, comments from council, or if not, a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Condos?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilmember Connor. Roll call.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Anfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Next are the payment of claims, two thousand twenty-five, one eighty-seven, improvement, payment of the itemized claims as set forth on the check registry bill list for the time period, May second to May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Is there a motion or any comments?
I'll make the motion there.
Motion by Councilmember Kraft? Seconded by Council President Wilk. Roll call.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Anfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Next item on the agenda are resolutions, and I'll read in summary fashion. One eighty-eight, appointing Joyce Tinas as the qualified purchasing agent. One eighty-nine, requesting approval of items of revenue and appropriations, ask for NJSA forty-eight, four dash eighty-seven, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, NJDOT grant for Bayview Avenue Phase Two. And one ninety is a resolution providing for the issuance and sale of the Borough of Seaside Park's four million six hundred and seventy-six thousand water sewer utility bond, USDA Series two thousand twenty-five, authorized by Bond Ordinance, heretofore adopted to finance various water utility capital improvements in and for the Borough of Seaside Park and the County Votion, New Jersey, providing for the form, maturity dates, and other details of said bond. One ninety-one, authorizing TNM Associates to provide professional engineering services to provide design, contract, administration, and construction observation services for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, NJDOT municipal aid roadway improvements, this to J Street. One ninety-two, renewal of Central Jersey Health Insurance Fund. One ninety-three, authorizing the appointment of seasonal employees for the Department of Public Works. One ninety-four, authorizing the Borough Administrator to hire seasonal labor employees for the Department of Public Works. One ninety-five, appointing seasonal employees for the Department of Beach Patrol. One ninety-six, appointing seasonal employees for the Department of Beach Control. One ninety-seven, authorizing the designated adjustment and or refund on water sewer utility accounts. One ninety-eight, amendment to owner-engineer agreement with Wilmington Vernic Engineers. One ninety-nine, authorizing two thousand twenty-five lawful license applications. Two hundred, authorizing the execution of change order number one to the contract between the Borough of Seaside Park and Down-to-Earth Landscaping LLC. Two oh one, adopting a cash management plan for the year two thousand twenty-five, designating the custodian an official depository of borough funds, directing the investment of idle funds and designated required signatures on borough checks. Two oh two, authorizing contract change order number two for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, NJDOT municipal aid reconstruction and elevation of Bayview Avenue Phase One. Any questions, comments from council, summary?
Mayor, I'd like to just make a comment on one eighty-eight, with Joyce as the qualified purchasing agent. I spoke to Janet before, just to confirm, just for record, she's only taken one dollar a year to do that for us? And both Janet and Jamie, who's our new CFO, are getting certified in that role, so they'll be able to take that over from her. And I should have brought it up to them and said about the bill list, but tied to that also with Joyce is that she's pretty much transitioned all of her work over to Jamie now as our new CFO. That's like two months ahead of when we would have lost her, so I'm really proud of them for all the work they did up at the office to make that a seamless transition, and my understanding is Jamie's doing an outstanding job. So, the bill list showed our first quarter payment to Seaside Heights under shared services, and that should be the last one.
Very good, and we certainly thank both individuals very much for their service to the town, and Jamie, as indicated, has already made a host of very well thought-out recommendations in a number of different areas.
She has.
Any other comments from council on any resolutions? If not, it's our practice to go into the audience. If there are any comments on resolutions, they're not required by law, we allow same. If anyone has them, if they could give their name and address into the record. Yes, Michelle?
Michelle Miller, fifteen hundred Lake Avenue. I just have a question about the ordinance, two thousand twenty-five, fifteen. When you repeated it, you mentioned again about J Street. In reference to O Street, could you keep in mind that bulkhead along O Street is torn, and that plastic or whatever it is is ragged? It's?
We can. This is comments, if any, on resolutions on the agenda, but certainly your comments are well taken and can be moved ahead. I agree with you.
Thank you.
Any other, any comments on resolutions, Perry?
Hi, Mayor, twenty-one I Street. I have a question on one of the resolutions about the striping of Ocean Ave that you've appropriated.
About which?
The striping of Ocean Ave, Ocean Ave. It was seventy-five thousand dollars appropriated for it. The county did it. What happens to, why?
Which resolution?
Sixty.
An ordinance. If we have any comments on any resolutions right now, we will entertain them if you have any.
Okay, are you going to do ordinances after the resolutions?
And public comment, any public comment is welcome, absolutely. In fact, you'll be one on the list.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments on any resolutions? Hearing now, I'll close the public portion as to resolutions, and I'd entertain a motion from council as a consent agenda if desired.
Make the motion, Mayor.
And I'll second it, Mayor.
Motion by Councilmember Condos? Seconded by Council President Wilk. Roll call.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Council President Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Anfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Rotunda?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
And that concludes the resolutions portion of the agenda. Anything further from council?
Mayor, I'd like to give the literary report.
Yes.
Public works. If garbage or recycling is not picked up in the willing, please be patient. Sometimes due to certain circumstances where late for pickups. For example, three of our DPW employees are volunteer firefighters that reported Jones Road Fire, which went to delays in pickup. Please feel free to call the ministry with your experience and significant delays. Construction office, thirty-eight permits issued in April, total in ten thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars. Code office, we have received six hundred and sixteen rental applications in two thousand and twenty-five, and seven hundred and sixty-eight inspections have been completed, including re-inspections. One hundred and six rental applications that were mailed out are still pending, and the code office is following up. Decade of air in the tank painting. The one-year inspection was completed on April twenty-ninth by the independent inspection agency. The interior of the tank is in excellent condition, and the exterior requires some minor touch-ups that will be completed in the next couple of weeks by the contractor. Slapton Avenue roadway improvements, surface course paving of Stockton Avenue and Lake Avenue is scheduled for this week. Therefore, the contractor would be complete, striping signage, and then remaining restoration. Building drainage project, the contractor has completed storm drainage and concrete work, built a new retaining wall and installable fence post. The infield work was completed, and workers being done on the brading and without the old re-sawing and the completing of the fence work. The field will be ready for the July opening day of the Seaside Park Summer Soft Bowl. Fourteenth Avenue Shoreline Stabilization Project was completed on May second. There would have, there were no trees taken out, the one was transparently. Internal work, work on the new front porch of the borough of Ford is already completed. All the decking has been replaced in a composite decking and allows a little bit of exact. Maintenance work on the window trim, et cetera, will be completed as time comes during the summer. Public Works is busy getting the beach ready for the summer, including installation of motor mats, branch booths, and getting the light管stands and equipment boxes ready. Just a reminder, if you have not completed your lead pipe survey, please do so as the borough has the deadline of July first. It's very important, Mayor.
Thank you, Marty. Any other items from council?
Mayor, I just want to let everybody know that we're having our first initial class class tomorrow night, and class is an acronym for community learning and skill sharing. And it's tomorrow night from five p.m. to seven p.m. in our community center there. And it's entry to photography is our first class class that we're having there. I will be looking to have more, obviously, as we come up with other classes and have some ideas for some, yes.
Is that at the community center where?
Yeah, five to seven.
It's free.
It's free? No, it's not free. It's ten dollars.
Is it?
A person.
Ten dollars a person?
Same as the two.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments or submissions from council? By way of announcement, of course, the entire governing body welcomes everyone to attend and encourages everyone to attend the annual Memorial Day Remembrance, scheduled on Monday, Memorial Day at nine-thirty a.m. And we've had a host of very dedicated, interested, interesting, rather, individuals who've shared their experiences with us over the years, and this year we will be honored by our guest speaker, who is the commander of the Joint Base. And here in New Jersey, obviously, someone has much to share in terms of credentials, past history, the military, and we look forward to hearing from him and anyone who, and everyone who can attend. It's obviously a very important annual remembrance from Seaside Park's community. And we thank Jenna and all those that have been working for the last month to put together the program and correspondence and calls and emails and the like. Anyone else on council, anything? Hearing now, we'll go into the audience if there's any public comments, if you could give your name and address into the record, and as promised, Fay, you have the floor.
Fay, here, in twenty-one I Street. We've appropriated, or you've appropriated, a lot of money tonight. What I would like to know is, if that full amount is not used, where does the difference go to? What makes me ask that is, you appropriated seventy-five thousand dollars for the striping of Bay, of Ocean Ave. County did it, so you don't need all that money. Where is that going to go?
I may not be accurate on this, but we may have to reimburse them through Schedule C for that striping effort, but I'm not certain of that.
It's a county road.
It's a county road, but we have an agreement with them called Schedule C, where I think this year we set aside twelve thousand or fourteen thousand. Now, they took on the striping for us. I'm assuming now that we have to reimburse them for that effort, but I'm not positive. Do you know, Marty?
The striping is for the parking. They, they were not responsible for painting parking, parking stalls.
They did it, though, right? Did we, did we, did we strike the parking? I understood they did it.
Bill, just, just explain. We have to pay on the Schedule C.
Oh, okay.
But they, we, we don't have to pay for the yellow line down Main Road, and we have to pay for the parking stalls.
We did the numbering ourselves.
Right, I know that. Okay, another question. With the Marina, the money that you appropriated for the repairs and improvements of Marina, is that coming out of the Marina fund?
Yes.
Okay. It's not coming out of the?
No, no, it comes out of the rating utility, which is self-liquidating.
Okay. All right. All right. I think that's it.
Thank you, Mary. Any other public comments? Yes? Eddie?
Eddie Klein, 48 Eleventh Avenue. Monday night, there was an excellent program here on scams and various scams that are current and how to protect yourself. The sergeant from the prosecutor's economic crime unit was here. Sorry that you got to be able to come, it was an excellent meeting. This is part of all the neighborhood watch, and I would like to publicly commend the police department for keeping this program going. Not only do they offer excellent speakers and topics, but generally when the speaker has finished their presentation, it's an open Q and A. And it's an excellent opportunity for residents to ask questions of the police, as well as interfacing and, you know, getting to know, getting to know you. So kudos to the police department. I just have a couple of things that I don't understand that are wrapped up in ordinances. Would this be the time to ask those questions?
You can.
Okay. All right, well, I just wanted to make sure, you know.
You talking about the ordinances that were read on first reading tonight?
I'm sorry?
The ordinances that were read on first reading tonight? Usually those discussions occur at a public hearing next time, but you can go ahead and ask. Usually they're, they're not discussed, it's a first reading, they're introduced, and then at the public hearing, the second reading and public hearing is when you ask questions and discuss any issues about them, quite frankly. At first reading, usually you don't do that, but go ahead.
Okay. The money for the Marina water distribution, what order, I just don't know what that means. What order are they distributing?
Water distribution is that the, at each of the slips, there's a water source, spigot, whatever, and some of the, the water lines that run under the dock, a lot of that is in disrepair.
Oh, okay.
So it's maybe to that.
And for the water department, sanitary cleaning and inspection? What do they, what do they clean and inspect? Is that the, I don't even know, I don't even know what to guess.
I'll get a clarification on that, just to make sure for the, for the next reading.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get it.
We'll get a clarification on that.
Okay, okay. The million plus for bay mitigation, I assume you're putting that in there in the hopes that maybe somebody in the feds will decide we really don't need an SAB? I mean, right now, we don't have anything to spend that money on, is that correct? We're doing it. The $1,020,000 bayfront flood mitigation is part of the capital, one of the capital ordinances.
Being put into the coffers?
Right.
Where the, the project?
In the hopes that we'll have something to spend on.
Yeah, we're building it up, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
I just want to try and understand. And I was down to 14 today, took my life in my hands going over the road, baby, my God, that's a mess. But I understand why. Because I wanted to look at the butterfly garden, I also wanted to look at the Finnish shore stabilization project. It's really nice. Did that all cost $75,000? The gambian baskets and the, no, that's just what we set aside, but we may not spend that all.
Yeah, Marty has the exact.
I don't have, I don't have the exact.
No, that's all right.
I don't know, it was, I don't know.
It's like maybe $25,000?
Twenty-seven or something? It was in twenties.
Twenty-three, seven, seventy-three, seven hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
There's a lot more buried underneath, but it's buried. It goes, it goes towards that walkway?
Yeah.
Twenty-five, thirty feet back. The dirt on top of it. It's a, it's a big pyramid. It's, it's, it goes all the way back up to twenty feet from, from that edge, and the dirt was put back on top of it.
Okay.
It's not what you see where the rock is. It's buried under that dirt.
No, it looks so much better than the, so, washout?
Oh, yeah. Looks good.
Thank you for your clarification, I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Eddie. Any other public comments? Yes, Tom?
Tom Joseph, 704 South Bayview. I have just a follow-up question on that million, $20,000 bond issue that, that is included in, what is it, ordinance 15? When are we going to get a public readout on what the plan is for that money? I mean, I, I heard Speaker Zabarski saying we shouldn't ask questions now because there'll be a public comment when it comes up for second reading. My experience is when the second reading rolls around, the passage of it is already a done deal, and, and there's rarely anything other than is there a public comment? So I, I, I think that's kind of, that may be the rules in this, in this state or something, but it don't make any sense to me. But the bottom line is, shouldn't we, in the town who care about what we're doing about flood mitigation, especially those of us that live on Bayview, have some mechanism for finding out what we're planning to spend a million dollars on? Is there a plan? Or are we just going to raise the money and hope for the best? But right now, I'm not hearing there's a plan. I haven't heard anything that there's a plan. It has been so long since the last public meeting, when all that was presented was two or three possible versions of part of a plan. I, I mean, we're raising a million dollars. We're going to spend the town's money to take out those bond issues, because bond issues aren't free. And it creates a debt on the town, and I'd just like to know what the plan is. And I think the rest of us in this town would like to know also. And I don't know how many times we have to ask for a series of public meetings on a regular basis to find out what's being done until the problem is solved. So far, we're just talking to dead air. Thank you.
Any other public comments, Shirley?
Shirley Crosswell, 700 North Bayview Avenue. First thing is, have we considered moving the arts and crafts show down by the Marina lawn and expanding it? I know, one time I brought it up, and I was told, well, the chief had already put in plans, so it couldn't be changed. But I think it's time for a change. I think we need to expand it. Maybe Tri-Bro could do something to raise money as far as like providing hot dogs and hamburgers. The fire company could come sell their shirts and mugs. Open it up more, have a band playing. But I would like to see it changed. I mean, it's almost, it's gotten old. And there's, change isn't always bad. And let's open it up. I mean, you could have scouts raising money, you could have anything. Kids for class trips, use our schools. But I'd like you to really consider moving it. And it gets brought up, and it gets knocked down each time because it's too late to do it, or, oh, no, we've always had it there. But I'd like you to consider that and see what can be done and expand it and include others, especially Tri-Bro, who we all know is in trouble. We also have the ordinance, which I brought up a year ago, and was told I had to write down the addresses. But we have the ordinance about what's between the sidewalk and the curb. And for those of us that either have to push a handicapped child, or the elderly in wheelchairs, or even baby strollers. Some places, it's very hard, and you have to actually go out in the street. I have to take Abby in the street, because I can't get through, I can't tell her from her face, because she doesn't understand that. And I don't think it's right. You put in an ordinance, but that was to stop. Nothing gets done. Oceanfront, G, H, and I, all have dune grass. G Street, you can't even see until you get out into the street. You passed an ordinance, let people know about this ordinance and do something about it. It's not fair. It's not fair to people even with little kids. And if you put in an ordinance, I think it needs to be followed up on. And again, I was told to write down addresses. Well, if need be, I will drive up and down each street, and then perhaps letters can be given to the people, or maybe Taxpayers Association could post it. I don't know, but I think it really needs to be followed up on. Dead silence.
I hope you were listening.
Do you agree? I mean, that's why I want to know, do you agree or disagree with it?
Yeah, I believe when you brought it up last year, you were told to bring it up to code enforcement, and they would take action. That's what you have to do with the addresses.
But I have to write down the addresses.
Well, somebody, somebody got to let them know.
Okay, let me ask this. We strike up and down the streets all the time. It'd be easy for them to know I'm a thing on a piece of paper. Gene and Ocean. There's not a whole lot, but the ones that are there are very intrusive. Okay, if, if Rite Aid closes and I'm unemployed, then, which I'm going to be, I think, then I will write up and down the streets and get the list. But I didn't think it was up to a resident to have to do your ordinance. Like, if that's what it takes, I will. Okay. And street lot, you know, I was going to bring that up, because I do it every time. I'd like to see it brought up in a work session, so I could hear everybody's opinion on why we are saving this lot. It seems like it's done behind closed doors, because people bring it up, residents, a lot of residents want it sold, but yet you never discuss it. So I would like to present, perhaps you could put it on the work session, so we can hear your reasons. Now, I heard you wanted to do it as a parking lot. Have you figured out the cost of that? How much you would bring in? Probably not, but I did. If you park, say you get a million for the lot, which is probably a fair price right now, and you park forty cars there, $2 an hour, six hours a day, filled, every single day, that's $480 a day, in the three months, if it's full, every day for six hours, it's $43,200. It will take over 23 years to make up what you could get selling the lot, not including the taxes the town will get. I think you need to discuss this more. Thank you.
Any other public, yes, sir?
Thank you, council. Joseph Ragucci, 264 N Street. Bringing forward a long, ongoing situation we have on our block at 267 N Street. We have an owner there who has long, several years, had violations, including rodent infestation, structural maintenance, failure to maintain exterior walls, failure to keep exterior property clean. This has been since Sandy. He has gotten all these violations. When he does not show, it is just postponed. Failure to appear, postponed, postponed. I'm here asking you folks, how do we make this disappear? He needs to be responsible for this. I have photos of what this property looks like. We have had tide beck and shingles flying on our property for over 10 years now. There has to be an answer to make this progress forward, and he either addresses these issues or he sells the property. He already has these violations from you folks, which means you are aware of it, then when he, he does not appear in court, it's postponed. The last one, I believe, was April, you postponed it to September. That doesn't seem fair to me. To me, if I were him, I would just never show up. It just keeps going on and on. So I would like an answer, what our next step is to have him be responsible for this. I'm sure if it was next to one of your houses, it wouldn't go on. So there must be a procedure, Nancy, there must be a procedure that we need to take. These are some of the neighbors. I have other neighbors who have also filed complaints. There must be the next step that we can take. So I'm asking the council and the mayor, what is the next step we take when someone doesn't appear in court?
Thank you, Joe. Perhaps we'll get input from our attorney. You're referencing a municipal court, but there's also code violations also.
Okay, he has all those code violations as well. And your attorney has this information as well?
I don't know in terms of procedure, what Steve might suggest in terms of research and this.
Mayor, I'll send a memo to the mayor and council advising us to the options.
It doesn't seem to me that it should be our responsibility, which I'm willing to do, to hire an attorney to move this forward. But that becomes a financial burden on us, which I don't think should be necessary.
Excuse me, sir. You're telling, have I heard you right? Every time we feel the summons, he'd all show up to court?
Correct. I have a list here from state court of about ten, I'm sorry, municipal court, of about ten violations, failure to appear.
Ten violations?
Yeah. There is a warrant, but it's a bench, is it a bench warrant? So the police don't get caught?
I believe it, no, I believe it, I believe it.
Two, four, six, eight, 10, 11.
What time did he show up?
Eleven violations.
Eleven violations. He has not shown since.
2023.
And it's even the, like, there should be living here, right?
No one's living in there, are they?
Yes, they are. And it says, "Structure unfit for human occupancy." We have birds flying in and out of his house.
And Joyce Pashalitis, 265 N Street, I'm right next door. Every day, I see birds going in and out of the roof, they're bringing materials. This has been going on for, I've been there for three years, but it's been over 10 years. So I can just imagine what kind of nests and stuff, and it's got to be a fire hazard. So I'm really concerned about the safety of something going on fire. And also, the, his bulkhead is deteriorated where the neighbors on both sides is affecting our bulkheads. It's, it's pretty bad.
The bulkhead into the, behind the?
So they share, they have, they share the bulkhead, so when he doesn't address his, it's eroding, which erodes.
On both sides of us. Both, both neighbors on.
It's just about safety, it's.
I would imagine that if you're not appearing for these violations, that someone should arrest them or whatever, especially being in a house that says unfit for occupancy.
It's a long drawn out, I've lived there almost 30 years. It's a long drawn out.
Show your name to the record.
Nancy Napolitano, two, that's my husband, Nancy Napolitano, 264 N Street. I've lived on that block for almost 30 years now, I mean, full-time, probably for about the last 10 years. It's, it's getting worse every day, like, how that thing is still standing, the steps are not finished. I had to come to the zoning back in the Gary Royer days, speak to him. Then it was COVID, the courts were closed. It was always an excuse when it was in zoning. They, the borough had to hire a contractor to take down the scaffolding, which was in front of the house for years, because it was so deteriorated that I thought someone pedestrian on the sidewalk, dog walking in season is, is, is very, you know, there's just a lot of action on the block. And if that scaffold is rotting, it's going to fall and hit someone. So you guys hired a zoning, hired a contractor, paid him, Joyce, isn't there a lien? $1,200 lien on, on the property? To pay back the borough. I don't know if it's industry, would he ever pay without tax? You know, I don't know if it's liens or taxes or penalties, but no one gave me $1,200 years ago, and, and, and it's not getting a dime interest on it. And then, there's so many, there's so many stories that's been going on there. I mean, it's just a mess.
It's just the health concerns with the birds.
Sorry, your name to the record.
Nancy, me?
I don't know who's speaking.
I already did Pashalitis.
Oh, thank you, thank you, sorry. You, you see, you did your homework. Did you know, are you, is he still paying the taxes on that?
He does pay the taxes. He utility, yes, he, he pays the taxes. He inherited it from his grandfather. The history goes like this. It was, it was with a big, what did the U's mean right after Sandy? Uninhabitable? Like, he had such damage, because they're on the southern, I'm on the lagoon side of N Street, across, directly across from this ice shore. Joyce lives next door on the open bulkhead side that faces Cape Court. So they got a lot of sandy damage. So the house was listed as uninhabitable.
So the house was listed as uninhabitable with a big U on the door. He moved immediately back in, like, pretty much camped in there without utilities or anything. Then, I don't know if it's better or worse, I told him about the REN grants for full-time owners. So he was able to get a REN grant. So there may be the state involved with him, too. He basically started the REN grant, stole from the program, and never finished his REN grant. Never got a CO, moved out while the house was getting lifted, and has moved back, basically squatting in his own house. So yes, all of his utilities and taxes are paid up to date. The house was gifted to him through an inheritance. But it's really, it's really gone on to, for safety, what if it goes on fire? The wind that whips from the south could light the whole block on fire.
There's no sheetrock in the, I guess, after Sandy that you could cut up to a certain point, there's no sheetrock halfway up the wall. So I'm like, how's that, how is that wiring? I mean, was it ever replaced? Is it, will that from the sea water damage was, you know, if it never got inspected, you know, the, you know, it could go over the place?
Sorry, I'm not disputing. I'm trying to get the process here. We have violated this guy. Is that right?
Correct.
And every time, he just doesn't show up for the court.
Correct.
And so?
Correct.
And I guess the judge, they want to give him a subpoena or something?
You know, this is like immaterial.
Wait, I mean, here, I want to.
I don't know those decisions. Our councilors don't. Did they give him, you don't show up for court, you get a subpoena.
No, they just keep rescheduling it.
But it's like a misdemeanor. It's not a legal, like, a criminal case. So there's not a warrant where they could track him down and film him. Like, one time, they said they don't know where he lives. Find him. I go, he's home right now. He's off on Monday. He leaves for work.
So you're on our attorney?
Yeah.
Yes.
If a house is unfit for living or for occupancy?
I will give a memo to the mayor and council, go over the file, give them their options. There's two, there's multiple avenues. One, obviously, is in municipal court. If there's pending summonses, I do serve as the alternate conflict prosecutor. I'd be happy to take a good look at this, maybe take it over if there's six or seven outstanding summonses. There's also in our municipal code, an avenue with regard to complaints and public hearings with regard to structures like this. If you remember, we did one way back when with Park Central. So there is avenues like that. I will give a memo to the mayor and council. They'll have to discuss it and advise me how they would like to proceed with this problem, and we'll go forward in that fashion.
Do you contact any of us, or?
No, I, my clients, the mayor and council. So when I give my advice to the mayor and council, we'll make a decision. It's litigation, that's usually an executive session. But I'm sure Ms. Kroom, the business administrator, will keep you apprised as to what action the borough intends to do going forward.
She's our neighbor, too.
Okay. I didn't know where she lives.
She lives two doors away.
Well, I'm sure she's familiar with it, so yes.
I'll be discussing it.
Thank you.
Not a problem. Thank you for bringing our attention.
Thank you, Paul.
Do we know whether or not the monies were paid back? Is that in the record?
Well, Mayor, Judge Peterson, I used to call him Judge. Mayor, I'll find out from the tax assessor if there's an actual lien filed with the tax assessor on the property.
It's $1,200.
Okay. So you go over it, and you have a copy of it, or you know for sure?
We have, it's on the New Jersey court, it's listed.
Well, there's a difference between a lien on the property with the tax assessor and money that may be owed to the municipal court.
That's what the municipal.
That's not a lien. That's money owed to the municipal court.
That I don't know.
Yeah, so I'm not so sure if there's a lien on the property as a result. It may be money owed to the municipal court for restitution on the scaffolding. So like I said, there's a lot of moving parts, but I'm happy to take a good look and give a memo.
All right.
We'll go forward. Thank you for bringing our attention.
Thank you, John. Nancy, thank you, ma'am. Any other public comments? Yes, Mike?
Mike Spatafino, 59th Avenue. I got it, I better read this first, because otherwise it's going to disappear. This is from the Environmental Committee. We will be purchasing plants for the gardens at Dell's on Friday, May 16. Planting will take place on Monday, May 19, at 2:00 p.m., meeting at the Butterfly Garden. If you are available to help, at least an hour or two, please let me know. That was to the Environmental Committee. But if any of you feel like doing some planting, you're welcome to come, dig a little dirt, put in a nice little plant, okay? So that's that. The second thing is, how many active wells do we have pumping now?
How many what?
How many wells?
Two.
Two. All right. But one of them's going to be shut down, right?
Well, we have more than two active wells. We can't use them all at the same time. We have three active wells.
All right, councilman, I don't understand what active means. If it's not pumping, how is it active?
We, they're backups. We have backup wells. We worked through this extensively. You can only run one well at a time in certain, same location. We have a backup well near another well. So we have three active functioning wells, to answer your question. We can only use two at the same time.
Okay, because that's what I was wondering about the $150,000 for rehabilitation of wells. And I was wondering why this is a pretty high fee for, if there's only one or two wells pumping, but if, I don't know what the rehabilitation involves. Can anybody tell me? I don't expect you to know everything, so what's involved?
I don't have an itemized. We do, the sleeve is checked, the pumps are checked, there's maintenance, regular, ongoing maintenance with each well.
So this may be every year?
It's not every year, no. I can get that itemized for you and bring back to my committee report, possibly at the next meeting.
We really appreciate that. Thanks. The other thing is the similar type of question about the $250,000 breakwater improvement. Is this something that has occurred suddenly, or has this been a ongoing deterioration that has to be addressed?
Ongoing deterioration, yeah.
And that, yeah, so this isn't something that we, again, would expect to see every year or anything?
Oh, no, no.
Okay. All right, good. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comments?
Hey, Joe. Joe Toof, Preparation Department. When you're done, play a thing on Monday. If you want to go to Central Regionals, having songs and sweets, really for our seniors, but anybody's welcome. We need 10 people to sign up at the minimum to get a bus at 6:30. Reception for some desserts at Central Regional High School. Berkeley Township's celebrating their 150th anniversary. This is kind of part of that. So, you know, it'd be nice if we had some residents come by. You know, they helped us out with our 125th anniversary, so it'd be cool to get some people out. They're doing desserts, and then the choir's going to be singing some songs.